There you go.
Hey, we're on the call to order a city council conference of December 13th, 2022. One agenda item, agenda item one, presentation from the Norman Development Coalition on the community survey.
Well, this is, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Thanks for all of you that came. This is the first opportunity I've had since we've been here about a year and a half to present something comprehensive to you. So this will probably feel like drinking water from a fire hydrant, I understand. And I hope that after the holidays that maybe we can get back together because there's probably eight or 10 issues in this that you might want to just talk about singularly with us. So a lot going on. The bottom slide here about economic development today, there's really three questions that NEDC has been trying to answer for a while, and I think, I think we share these, these questions. One is how do we create a vibrant, thriving economy and become a world-class community? I think we all want that. Two, how do we ensure the rising tide lifts all boats, including the unhoused, the unemployed, and the underemployed? I think you'll be surprised at our unique perspective on that. And then how do we collaborate and partner locally, regionally, and statewide? So I'm going to try to answer some of those questions, but you'll, you'll end up with a lot more than just those three questions. The next page is the Norman Vision Statement. This was taken off your last comprehensive plan, and if you were to read, that wasn't approved, but if you read through it, it pretty much says the same thing, same three questions. How do, how do we become the best in the state, best in the world? How do we become that model? And of course, get your facts first, then you can distort them. I can make these jokes about economics because I have a degree in economics and finance and international business, and Elizabeth has two degrees in psychology, and we have literally and figuratively married all of that together. And so we've gone around the country doing things like this, and we're glad we finally settled in, in Norman. We love it here, and there's, there's a lot to love about Norman. In addition to, to our education, I guess, both formal and practical, I've been in the business 36 years in economic development. 10 of those were spent with a national fundraising firm where I was a COO, and we were owners of the firm. They're the largest in the country in terms of writing strategic plans for communities, for economic development, cities, counties, regions, sometimes states. Montana, we did, Texas, we did, various ones. But that was about 60% of our business. And a COO, I had 35 campaigns going on around the country at any one time. 60% of those would have been this, what we're doing here in Norman. But 40% were for the things that you wouldn't even think I knew anything about. Homeless shelters, battered women's shelters, identity cards for immigrants that don't have any, you know, any identification, YMCA's, salvation armies, you name it. That was 40% of our business. So a lot of background in that. In fact, one of Elizabeth's last campaigns was in, in a homeless facility. But it was more than homeless. You know, I know about the visible homeless, invisible homeless, and we were trying to move the invisible, which there are a lot more of those, into meaningful jobs and meaningful employment, and that included training and, you know, certificates from companies that we worked with that said they would employ these people. So that's not part of what we're doing today. That's not our strategy at NEDC at the moment, but just trust me when I say we, we understand all that's going on in that arena. So page three, at the top, we spent 300 hours over the last year interviewing 130 community leaders, a list that was given to us when we arrived, probably closer to 175 or 200. We simply couldn't get to everybody, but we are continuing to interview those people, even though the stats won't be in any of our, our documents. You can't really read that. That's like the first page. And there were four questions. How would you characterize the Norman economy today from excellent, good, fair to poor? For comparison, if you look back over the last five years, how are we trending? Are we improving, declining, or are we flat? Do you feel like elected leaders are doing everything possible to ensure an improved economy and quality of life for citizens? While that might have felt like we were targeting Norman City Council, that was an open-ended. Some people talked about the school system, some talked about the county, so it's a mixed group. And then this fourth question is to be certain we understood that perspective when you define improvement. Are you talking from a social perspective or an economic perspective? Below that, you can see this graph, really diversified group of interest. I think the largest on here is, is government down there in the right corner, 14 and a half percent, followed by educators, the green one above it, 13.16%. And then it went on down, a few individuals retired. Of course, we had professional services. Financial institutions was actually number three, 11.84%. So a really diversified group of people we're interviewing. And so the question is, what were we asking them? Well, this next page is kind of, you, you all were probably exhausted with this process, but Market Street Services came in in 17 and 18 and 19, and they did these four-phased analysis. The first one was a community assessment, kind of like a SWOT analysis, and they compared us against other like-sized communities. They followed that up with a target sector analysis to tell NEDC, well, what kind of industry should you be recruiting? What's a good fit for Norman? Then they came up with a strategic plan for us. And then finally, they came up with the implementation plan, which included a merger with the Chamber of Commerce as, as one of the options. So the questions were meant to be, this was developed pre-COVID, and right as COVID hit, it wasn't published because everybody was kind of locked down and locked up. And so we wanted to find out post-COVID, is it still relevant? So that's what our question's been about, this plan. It had 10 initiatives in it, or 10 pillars, I guess, a lot of different things packaged in that. And, and so that's where we're kind of at today, kind of the results of all of those interviews. Another little joke about the economic mood swing. So it just depends on your perspective, really. You know, are you a consumer? Are you a business owner? Just one little example, how you can have two different perspectives. Page five, this is really important. So from the White House Office of Management and Budget, this is their definition, the traits of a strong economy. And I'm going to add just my personal commentary on some of these, but I think you ought to think about them after we leave here. So the first one is local governments do not struggle to provide essential services. Well, there are people who probably want to parse, well, what's an essential service? You know, trash and water, I think all that's going, going smooth. Some people might consider the unhoused an essential service that we should be. So again, it's going to depend on your perspective, how you feel about that. Schools are strong and prepare students for work. It's not really a city issue, but it is in the sense that this is our workforce of tomorrow. Streets are safe and clean. You know, we're newcomers here. I'd say that we're relatively safe community and certainly clean, although I would say when we first interviewed here and we flew in, we felt like our city could do a better job with, really along the interstate. I guess that's not city, along the interstate could do better.
Couldn't have to do with the wind, though, right? It's a windy state, blowing trash around.
That was right after y'all's big ice storm, where there were branches all over and all that stuff. Recreational programs are abundant. I certainly think they are, but in the interview process, we found out that a lot of people don't think we have the kind of facilities for travel teams and different sports. I think the Young Family Center is going to address that with basketball and volleyball and maybe some swimming. I think it was more around the baseball arena that kept popping up, that we can't accommodate tournaments, and that's big money, so it's important. Social welfare programs are minimal. I would say generally, I think they are in, in Norman, although a statistic that Dr. Nick with School System gave out the other day is free and reduced lunches are up to 58%. 22 out of 24 schools now qualify. Last year was 17 out of 24. In our report, which isn't written yet, it's about 180 pages written, we've probably got about 60 more pages to go, we talk about free and reduced lunch, we talk about third-grade reading comprehension. That's gone down drastically. Free and reduced lunch in the last 20 years, is it like 24% 20 years ago? It's at 58% today. So both of those numbers are headed in the wrong direction, and we've got some commentary on why we think that's happening. Citizens enjoy consistent employment and regular wage gains. We've certainly got a low unemployment rate, so I think that's well. Businesses are able to plan for consistent expansion, I think generally so. But I think number seven and number nine kind of go together. Businesses are willing to risk significant capital. There are unfortunately some findings, you know, three companies do not intend to stay in Norman and will move their headquarters in the next five years. And they said there was nothing we could do about it, that it was a toxic political environment. That's what's in this report. We're going to keep working on them. They haven't left yet, but that's what they said in their interviews. Businesses are able to hire full-time employees. That's a struggle for all businesses and all cities and all communities. And then communities grow closer tight-knit as young professionals remain in the areas, growing employment opportunities, and their hometown capture their interest. I don't think that's really true yet for Norman either. There are some statistics that show that we are losing young professionals, not at the rate, and I know there was some consideration on the Market Street Report, some people contested that, but there's still some data that shows we're losing them, maybe not at the rate that we thought we were. And so again, just think about all these from your perspective, and, and we can discuss those later. What, what the title of this really is, is the flow of jobs and income. So everything is about money. I mean, all the things you guys want to do is about money. What NEDC wants to do, it's about money. So improving the wages here is what it's all about at the end of the day. So I got, I got a couple of graphs in here. On page six, this is not my quote, this also comes from the White House Office of Management and Budget. A vibrant, dynamic retail sector is not the cause of a strong local economy, but the result of it. So I have some particular issues with the way Oklahoma does funding. I think there was an article in the paper recently, and, and I want to talk about that in a few minutes, but I think that's part of it. But this barrel, this is what I want you to think of. Think of the Norman economy, the Norman boundaries, everybody who lives and gets a paycheck in Norman, their salaries, their part-time, full-time wages, if they're hourly, their social security payments, transfer payments, is about $4 billion that's circulating in our economy. Now, that's not to talk about what all, what all the gross income is for businesses and all of that. We're just talking about spendable money. And it's really broken down into three sections, which you can see below. There's red, it's coming out of our economy, that's taxes, local, state, and federal. And then there are imports. So imports, when you buy something from some other state or county or country, you're importing that good in, and our money is leaving. So that's how the economy drains, so to speak. Inside this barrel is all of us. We're all in here, we're all spending money. When you hear a Chamber of Commerce say the money spends, rotates three to five times, that's what they're talking about in this barrel. And then what we're focused on at NEDC are the green arrows. What brings money in? Healthcare, if you've got people traveling from outside of Norman, spending money at our health system, that's important. I don't focus on tourists, but Visit Norman does, that's a big deal. And tourists is not just people that might be coming here for a ballgame, it can also be destination retail. Do we have retail opportunities that people actually want to drive here and spend their money for? Manufacturing is near and dear to me, that's, that really is our focus at NEDC, but Norman's a hard town to, to get additional manufacturing, largely because we don't have the sites and we don't have the land. But headquarters, so there's kind of a pecking order for companies that we're trying to bring here. And I'd say at the bottom of the list is a distribution company, because they really don't employ that many people, and they take up a lot of space. A call center, generally because they don't pay that high a wage, although we did recruit one here this year. We'll be doing a grand opening in early January. The goal was to hire about 800, and last I checked, they were at about 500. They're not in the building yet. They've hired those people, they're training them in their homes. But they do pay over our per capita income. So if you're going to pay more than our per capita, more than our average per capita income, then that's good, we're going to lift wages up. Plus, they've got all sorts of benefits, and they converted it to an employee-owned call center. So now they're all the local vested people, which is great. And above that, you got manufacturers.
What's the pay? You said it's above the capital.
I believe it's 36,000 is the average salary, and we're at a 31, 32 per capita income. The top, though, is headquarters, and it doesn't matter whether it's manufacturing or these other companies I were talking about, which were not manufacturers, because a headquartered company, they make money from all over, and it comes back to the headquarters at the end of the day. So if you've got 10 branches, but your headquarters is right here, the branch profits are coming back to the headquarters. And a great example is we were in Bettendorf, Iowa, raising money for a campaign there, and John Deere's headquartered there, and we asked them to invest in the campaign at $1 million, and they did. And then when we were in Augusta, Georgia, doing a campaign, and there was a John Deere plant there, we asked them to invest, but the most they would do is 50,000. Well, they're, they're one of their manufacturing plants, they're not the headquarters. So you don't want to lose your headquarters for lots of reasons. And then the, the one I obviously saved for last is the University of Oklahoma, because they really are our ambition. And I think we've got to, we've got to do more for them, and I'll give you some, you may think we do too much, but I'm going to give you some insights on some recent discussions. Think of all the federal dollars they bring in. I mean, that's all outside income, that's all taxpayers in other cities and states, that the money's coming here. Think about all the 25,000 students and who's paying their tuition? Federal government, mom and dad, but generally not right here in Norman. So that's outside money, it's filling our barrel. And it's really important that, that we do the things that will help them grow and expand here and attract those federal dollars.
So before you go too far on that point, I know that there are lots of conversations happening outside of this body with the University of Oklahoma, but to date, I don't think that there has been a bridge to a relationship with the city government in the way that I think that it needs to be. I worked for OU when I started on council, and nobody knew I existed. And I was operating in both of those spaces in this community. And so I just want to go on record and say that there needs to be a concerted effort from both sides to have a larger conversation about what is going on and the relationship between the university and the city.
What would that look like to you, Lauren?
I think that that would look like having a study session with university leaders and having conversations about what that, you know, what this, we keep hearing about this move to the SEC and how important that is going to be for not only the university, but for our community. Like, why are more of us not on those SEC readiness groups, right? To date, I think there are maybe only two of us, and I know there are...
Longest-serving member.
Right. There are many, many, many groups that are working with, like, what does that look like as we move to the SEC and how do we build that community? Without the city council, none of those dreams can be made into a reality, because we need to be on board and helping to see that vision, to be able to move land use things, to have applications come before us and be part of those kind of robust discussions. And I hear lots of peripheral conversations that have never made it to primetime with me. Like, I've never had anybody call me to sit down and say, this is what we're thinking.
I am so glad you brought that up.
So I'd love to see that happen. My door is open.
We didn't talk, but I'm going to show you some more things in here. So this is kind of that introductory of kind of where things are and how close y'all want to be. We find ourselves as the middleman on a lot of things right now, and I want to explain that and how that came to be. This is just a little bit better of a breakdown. The green arrows are the primary contributors, kind of what's in, in the middle. So local small businesses is what we're all wanting, it helps, but we really need some destination retail. Who's my competition? There's 6,300 NEDCs around the country. Chambers of Commerce, Visit Normans, NEDC, 6,300 are all going after about 500 annual announcements of $10 million or 100 jobs. So the fact that we were able to get a 770, 800 jobs this year, I'm really happy about that, but it's not a $10 million investment, because it's a leased facility. Profitability, you've heard all of these kinds of things, it's the startup and long-term cost, the time to establish, and the community attitude. Most important elements, I'll say, on the existing buildings. So every day, the Department of Commerce puts out opportunities for communities, and I'd say easily 90% of them, we can't, we can't bet on because we don't have the building that someone's looking for. Very few come through and say, we need a greenfield site. Some say they need rail, and we don't have any rail service sites in Norman either. So approved, improved and pre-permitted industrial and commercial properties, a tax structure. So here's where I want to say a little bit about the tax structure. So coming from all over really, but really Georgia and Florida is where I did a lot of deals. B, NEDC certainly can, and I imagine you guys have tried and others have tried, this whole Oklahoma State cities get their funds from retail sales is such a disaster for so many reasons. I would love to go speak to the state on this.
Please do.
If the opportunity is presented, please let me do this, because I can show comparisons. But it's, it's worse than that. It's not just that they force you to rely on retail, that has its ups and downs, and I know we've been going up, that's a great perspective, but we're also, there's a lot of uncertainty with that, we don't know what's going to happen. But it forces me, the county is not interested in, in sales tax, they're interested in ad valorem, like every other state is. And if y'all were on the same page, it'd be a much better working relationship than y'all are focused on sales tax and they're focused on... And, and I'll give you the example of that call center. I'm trying to say this really diplomatically and appropriately, now that I know that people are watching. But when they were looking, they wanted a little bit of a goodwill incentive. 770 people is a $30 million annual payroll here. So think about the, the tax, sales tax that's generated off that. We did an economic impact analysis, I don't have it with me, obviously, but it was significant. And what they were hoping for is about 250,000, they're only putting about a million into the building, so that doesn't appreciably increase the tax for the county. So I had these conversations kind of off, you know, quietly. And, and of course, the city doesn't have an incentive package, y'all's incentives, as I've told plenty of people, and it's good, is we have the University of Oklahoma, that ought to be a lot of incentive and a great quality of life. But sometimes, not all communities are the same, and so you try to balance, and in this case, just looking for, for something to help renovate the facility. So at the end of the day, the private sector, NEDC, provided that incentive to them, to get them here. Would they have come without it? We don't think so, based on the conversations we had. But maybe, maybe I'm, I'm looking at it differently. I just want to point out that as a community, we need to do a better job of recognizing when a company's coming, what they bring to the table, and what we can do. I know that incentives are an interesting discussion in this town. I don't particularly believe in incentives, but they never make a bad deal good, ever, but they can put you over the top when you're in a dead heat. And so that's what we did, and that's why they're here. Yeah, the Oklahoma tax deal is, is a really big deal. This next one, so I'm, I'm only giving you a couple of questions. We, we asked 40 questions in these surveys, this is number two. Based on the trends over the past five years, is Norman improving, flat, or declining? Well, this graph, you can read below from a world-class, Ken Blanchard, and I've said this plenty of times, so there on the bottom left, you have 1890 when we started. This is the same for everything living, organizations, communities, and people. You know, you're born, you're an adolescent, you start to, you know, get educated, and you, you go up until you get to B, and you kind of, kind of peaked out, and of course, unfortunately for individuals, we all die, but that's not true for countries and organizations. And so as a city, the question really came down to, well, where are we on our innovation curve? What is Norman doing? 12% said we're on the way up, 66% said the last five years have been flat for them, and 21 said we're dying, that we need to innovate and do something different. At the end of the day, that's really what we're trying to do, is help Norman innovate using all these wonderful resources that we have to, to do that. There was something else I wanted to say, but I forgot, but anyway, it's important. So as we've been doing all of this work, we've been brought into different discussions. I was on the, well, I am on the airport master plan, and as we're beginning to write, as I said, we're at about 180 pages now, mostly Elizabeth, she starts to see conflicts. You know, if we're going to write this plan, can we write that in it and, and not be in conflict with city? And there are things in the city plan under economic development where you're actively not going after 50-acre sites and above. So there are things like that in there that may not be suited for what we're writing. And then we, you know, we looked at Livon University, and we looked at More Norman and Norman Public Schools, and again, if this were a slideshow, you'd see 17 of these populating the screen, and we looked at all of them. And not only are we in conflict with a number of them, they're in conflict with one another. So some of our major players in town might not be doing how the city would like to see their plan or how the county would, and so we just have to take that into account. So about four months ago, we called a meeting and invited some of those people, like airport people and university people and others, some private sector CEOs, there were 12 of them to room, and laid out some of these conflicts. That's what you're seeing in this, we use this as an example, this town and gown opportunity block. And so forgive my crude map, I took it off the newspaper that had just published the Turnpike, so that was their map, and then I colored in around it. And so what you see in the white, little, there's little things in there, like stars and all, so the bottom star would be, be South Campus. Right above it, there's little, there's two little things there, that would be Campus Corner and Downtown. So we know there's been a lot going, a lot of discussions there. The red triangle is the airport. To the left of that is the OU Foundation property, and in the middle of that is NEDC's and More Norman Technologies property. And then in the blue square is the Griffin property. And so lots of different things are going on in all of these different areas, but everybody's not really communicating. And so a master comprehensive plan is great, but there's got to be some vision behind how this comes together. And so we were just trying to say, because we work for the city, and we work for OU, and we work for More Norman, y'all need to communicate better so we can communicate better with you. So we had that meeting, and it went, interestingly, I'd, I'd say, we spoke for about 45 minutes, and, and it felt like a minute before anyone said anything, it's probably just 10 seconds or five seconds even, but then everybody started to talk, and interestingly enough, those 12 people had never been in a room together and said so. I've never met so-and-so, we've never talked about this stuff. And so ultimately, what came out of that meeting is they agreed to meet every month until they could get all of these kinds of things resolved. And even OU, to their credit, said years ago, they wouldn't have been a good partner for Norman, but they're ready to be a partner now. And so that came out of that meeting. I would say two criticisms we had in that meeting is this Lake Thunderbird area that's tan, again, that's my tan color, and the Noble area, we're missing an opportunity here because we're not talking about the outdoor narrative and recreation and, you know, mountain biking trails at Lake Thunderbird and the improvements that could be made there to attract talent. And, and we've been in a lot of communities that have developed their river, and I know the Canadian River is dry in some places and wet in others, but there's nothing down there, and we ought to be exploring what could be done with our, our river, a river walk, even if it's all natural, to be something that we're thinking about. But that's not really on the radar for any of us, I, I don't think, at the moment, other than Joe Carter, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's a Norman Forward idea.
Okay, wonderful.
It hadn't come to fruition.
Okay, well, that's good, because we want to support Norman Forward.
We need, it's owned by a private owner, the whole river area.
You may see something in the next 90 to 120 days coming your way.
But it is on the Norman Forward slate.
That's awesome.
It's just we don't own the property, so we can't do anything for forward-looking plans.
Got you.
Yeah.
So that meeting went well, that was a town and gown, just kind of come together, and so we've continued to meet. We also use this map, and so I'll just point out to you, this is the airport. And so, you know, I don't know what y'all see when you look at this, but there's a lot going on in this. You have different entities. Of course, you know, just above Interstate 35 on the bottom is the OU Foundation property, but that pink area in there adjoins the fence at the airport. That's ME in the cutout square, and to the right of that is NEDC property and also More Norman Technology property. So the left of that cutout of ME is NEDC property, and on the end is the OU Foundation property. I will say that I think it's important for y'all to know that we sold five acres to Commander Aircraft three years ago. They had a three-year window, and we bought it back two weeks ago because they didn't, they weren't under construction. So NEDC has about 20, 21 acres, 26 acres in here. The Foundation has 12, More Norman has 26. So we're, we're three landowners, we adjoin the fence of the airport, and there are opportunities, potential, to do something with that that is related to the airport that could be significant, could be good. The red site is where the Oklahoma Aviation Academy would go, and that's below, you can see. And that's actually a slide from a, a presentation, and I think it's important for you all to know this and, and for me to, me to say it appropriately. So NEDC submitted the application. the application for the $20 million for the, for the academy. We didn't think the state was going to give money to cities or to school systems because they have their own ability to get money. And so we made the application. And it was like a Monday at about 5:00, and I got a call and said, we'll be here Friday and present to the Joint House Senate Committee on ARPA funding. And so I put together a presentation as best I could, and I went and presented. And again, I didn't hardly know where the, the building was. I had been in the Capitol in Oklahoma before. And I tried to, they let it off with the fact that Tulsa was in the room, Oklahoma City. There were seven of us in the room about getting funding. And they tripped me up on a couple of questions. I don't think intentionally, but they asked like, well, if we fund this, where, how does, how do you account for the school funding that we provide to kids who aren't in Norman, who will drive to Norman or move to Norman? I couldn't answer that. There were three or four questions like that. And I said, well, Dr. Nick is on this group, and I can get those answers for you if I get invited back. Because I kind of led off the meeting with, some of you won't be invited back for a second meeting, some of you will. And so I left the meeting, trying to get the answers, sent those up. And then later in the week, I did not hear from them. But I did hear from somebody, somebody they're called. I'd give you a name if I knew a name, but I don't know. But it came back to me that, you know, Norman hasn't been really friendly with the state. The partnership doesn't really exist. And so it was kind of given to me that, that if I get invited back, I need to do a better job of not making it so Norman-centric and, and not talk so much about Norman. Did get invited back, and this time I was allowed to bring people, so I brought them. And, you know, we originally asked for 50. Then they said, well, we might not do anything. And then they said for a third meeting, come back and show us what that school looks like. If we don't do anything and you do it all, if we put in 10 million or if we put in 20 million. So we, we put together three economic impact reports on each of those deals and put all of that together. And I even invited the mayor and Darrell to go on that one. And then I got word back from the state, don't bring Norman people. I mean, they don't even know the mayor, I mean, the mayor's newly elected. I'm sure they know Darrell. And so I just want to say that, you know, partnerships with the state and regionally are really important. They control a lot. And we ended up getting the 20 million with a caveat. The caveat is if the school system doesn't pass that bond in February, that money goes back. And so we really need to push hard on, on making that happen. Lots of good reasons from a workforce development standpoint why that's really important, because aviation was one of the targeted industry studies that came back through Market Street. So I think we all just have to do a better, better job on our partnerships and working with people that may not agree with us politically. So here's the SEC that y'all have asked about. And there's a survey that went out today. It's the first of probably two. In that same meeting, we had been meeting, we, a handful of us, six, eight, 10 of us, had been meeting for about two and a half months, ever since OU announced that they were going to join the SEC. So a group of not OU folks were meeting like, well, what does that mean? And how do we move the needle? How do we make Norman a better experience? And what are we missing? And so ultimately, I showed this to, to that group that day too. It wasn't this, actually. This is like the third or fourth version, because I probably had half these boxes on there. And then it just kept expanding. You know, what about safety and security? And what about healthcare? And I don't know why some of these boxes are red, so I don't think that means anything. I think I was trying to focus on them on some presentation. But you can see the different things in here. And these things are things you all are discussing, I know. Various things are in here. But all we're trying to do is say, okay, the SEC is interested in, or we're interested as a community, and OU is interested as a university, how do we give a world-class university, a world-class community to go with it? And so all of these things that would be part of a comprehensive plan have come up in discussion. Now, I would say that Team Norman is a group of probably 25 or 30 individuals, organizations or businesses. It's not formalized. It's not incorporated. It's just volunteers coming together to talk about these different things. But now that we have structured it more like this, now we have OU coming to the table too, each month and talking through these things and asking where we are. In fact, that airport that I just showed you, we had this airport subcommittee just last week to talk through what the opportunities and how we fix those are. So I think, I think everybody that's working within the moniker of Team Norman is generally just a positive person that wants to see progress made. And I think we can bring in everybody that we need to, to have these discussions. Out of all of that, finally, we got down to kind of the bullet points of the strategic plan that NEDC has been working on now for over a year. And so we've got these three pillars. I just want to highlight what's in them quickly. Community vision was first and foremost from the interview, interviewees. Everybody recognizes Norman doesn't have a vision, and we need that. So we're focused on one, as y'all are. And we're going to have a meeting Thursday. Matt has agreed to co-chair our visioning process with David Nemo from Chickasaw Nation Industries. And our group will be meeting with Strong Towns. And we're going to see if we can make this the best, biggest visioning process that Norman or anybody has ever seen. So that's part of what's going on there. Private sector leadership, people have become disengaged, just like I told you, those businesses have said they're leaving. Private sector leadership is sitting on the sidelines, and we've got to get them off the sidelines. Team Norman SEC readiness has now become part of our business plan, but I know it's in other people's business plans too. So we're not, you know, it's not just us, it's other folks. Under the economic growth and innovation, local business became the number one of the 10 things that we voted on. Local business is number one, so that's going to be the focus. The entrepreneurship and incubators, first off, I don't think y'all have gotten credit for the unanimous vote to give us $1 million for an incubator. The county also voted to do that. We also applied to the state. We haven't heard back from the state. We're working different angles on that. But you all know, we have invested NEDC 2.5 million in the Commerce Building that, that we own and leased to Visit Norman and leased to the Chamber. With your million and the county's million and another private sector million, if the state doesn't come through, we will invest the NEDC. We're going to spend $3 million. And it's probably going to be in the downtown area. So we will have spent $5.5, $6 million in the last couple of years down there. And I didn't see a story in the newspaper on the incubator. And it's where all the jobs are created. And so really appreciate that and just, just want you to know that. Placemaking and livability. So talent retention, I've said, it's all about quality of life. I've highlighted a couple of things. Norman Forward too, we want to be a supporter. Part of this plan is to include funding to help pass things like this, to help pass things like stormwater infrastructure, because that's a weakness. We know that's a weakness. And there are other things. We're not in the infrastructure business. We're not, we're not putting millions up for any, but, but we can put up a lot of money to, to get the message out, and, which we've never done before, by the way. We generally haven't, you're never going to see us involved in politics. But the things that matter to the business community, we're going to work hard to make sure they vote to, to make those things happen. And then the great outdoors, again, that gets back to the narrative that I was talking about. We could give you lots of examples of that. So the very last question we asked of the 40 questions is finally, if you're king or queen for the day, meaning you got all the money and you're going to get all the votes, what's the single most important issue, project or initiative that you'd make happen tomorrow? And here's what they are. Develop a holistic community development plan with a positive vision and brand for Norman. So one of the first things we did when we got here is I asked Scott at the Chamber, well, what's our slogan in Norman? What's our brand? He kind of struggled with that. And he says, well, the city's got a slogan, and we use a tagline, and Visit Norman's got one. I said, well, we're not unified. There's no, no. So I went to Visit Norman, and Dan Shim said the same thing. He said, we tried a branding initiative a few years back, kind of fell flat. And we had just, not just come, but a few years before, we were in Roanoke, Virginia, raising money for their economic development organization that had an outdoor narrative brand that the Chamber also used and their Visit Norman also used. But they used them in totally different ways. So, so the Visit Norman Destination Roanoke, it's actually catchier than that. I can't remember the name.
Go Nook.
Go Nook, yeah. So it's all about the pristine streams and the beautiful Appalachian Mountains. And so they were able to attract Trout Unlimited's annual meeting there. At the same time, the Economic Development Group used it to attract the Chute Brewery and Hum Kibucha. Both of them brought plants to, to their, created a lot of great, great jobs, just a really great environment and attracting all the talent you could want in Roanoke, Virginia. And we've got all that too. I mean, we've got a, we've got a river, we've got a beautiful lake, we've got a lot of property and land. You know, there's things we should do around that, that. But we need a brand. But the brand doesn't come out till you do the vision. I mean, that's kind of like a icing on the cake. Now that we got our vision, now you hire someone, okay, you got the vision, let's come up with a brand. And so I would love that if, if as a community, we were all sharing in that brand. Number two, to develop a destination event, shopping, entertainment venue district. Three, and engage and unify the private, private sector around that new second curve for Norman, a new innovation for Norman, what we're going to focus on. And certainly for us, I think weather and radar is key to that. A lot of great things going on in that sphere. And so how do we get there? Part of what you'll see next time we meet is the burning platform. There are issues like this 58 free and reduced and the third grade reading comprehension going down and per capita income and where it is compared to our peers. That is our internal NEDC burning platform. We need to be, have a, have a benchmark to our peers. You're going to see us produce and print and distribute either through the newspaper or literally to every household in the city. A benchmark on economic development to our peers, similar-sized cities and university towns to show how we're doing. The smart planning is all about what I showed you on the airport conflicts. We've got to do a better job of looking at things more holistically. The math is always the bottom line. Does it pencil out? This is where the, the wealth is on the sidelines. NEDC is changing its business model. Citizens defining the roles for government, that comes out of a visioning process. Respectful civic engagement. A vibrant downtown. I want to thank you all as well. I do think you would have been a partner with us on a downtown bid. We are convinced that the downtown is the heartbeat of any community. And it needs to be vibrant, it needs to be programmed 24/7. To us, that means a full-time person employed that does nothing but think about downtown and maybe campus. We might could combine those. But that needs to happen. It didn't happen through a bid, but we've, we've got budgeted funds in our plan. We still have to raise money. We're going to be raising money through the private sector and getting them off the sidelines to pull all of this off. And then the focus on K-12, the grades three through five are really a workforce development issue. But Elizabeth will tell you, it's really birth to five, where all of that.
Brain development.
Brain development happens. It needs, there needs to be a focus. And then, of course, communicating and being transparent. So everything we do relative to a vision, visioning plan will be published. And so I've tried to lay out, this is going to be our conversation on Thursday with Strong Towns in trying best to have the three groups understand what we're trying to accomplish. So we, NEDC has hired the Oklahoma Academy, I think a well-respected organization, to do a comprehensive visioning process. And for us, let me kind of tell you what that means. It's a six to 10-month process. These six government, private sector leadership, infrastructure, placemaking, education and economic development are the core six. But as we go through the process, we can take all six out and add something new, or we might add four or five to this. That's, that's the process. You, you put everything on the table and you say, well, what is our community really interested in? And so, you know, it includes things like an application process. So there will be 150 to 200 Vision Task Force members with full notebooks that are meeting over this six to eight months. It's a lot of, lot of folks. In addition to that, there are town hall summit meetings where everybody's invited and can come. I mean, it's a really thorough process. I know, because I've used it in two other communities, and it's been used in probably 150. I could get you a list of all the communities this kind of comprehensive process has been used on. Well, in addition to us hiring the Oklahoma Academy, Vibrant Community Partners, they're down here in the quality of life category, but only because, for those of you who came to our May 25th meeting, that's Quint Stoudt. Building a vibrant downtown was his book. So that's what we were focused on at the time. But he also does a quality of life survey. And he uses young professionals to do it. Very scientific and comprehensive. And we can get those survey results back within 90 days, and then they can be submitted to the quality of life group, the Norman Forward group, I'd say is going to be right there in placemaking, quality of life. In fact, they'll probably be doing the survey for them and helping them. So it just informs that group. As they're talking about quality of life, what does it really mean? Well, 1,600 random people will be called. You can't pick and choose parties or any of that, but, but you do get the demographics right. Females and males and age groups and all of that. So that's one part there. Civic IQ is an education. They go together because education is really K-12 and post-secondary. And civic IQ is about educating all of us. I, I wrote a brief column about that a week or two ago, or actually it was last week, and that's what I was referring to. And then we think, I don't know this to be true, but I do know that Vibrant Community Partners and Strong Towns have worked together in the past. And it's my understanding that Strong Towns will be heavy on the infrastructure, heavy on the government, will have their steering committee. And I don't know. I think the Oklahoma Academy and we are open to changing some of this. We hope Strong Towns is open. But what we do know is we're going to get three of the best groups that any community could get. So if we can figure out how to blend them so the community's not confused, well, why are you doing this and why are you doing that? It will be a fantastic process. And, you know, this one on economic development, it's kind of a interesting dilemma. It's not really a dilemma. But everybody that falls into a bucket, whatever they end up being, you got to put your point on the table. So we've just developed a plan. And it may be that it changes yet again, because going through the process, as we lay that out, people say, well, we really don't want to do that one thing you've got in there. And we're okay with that. I mean, you've just got to be open to, to giving up on your, on certain parts of your plan. But after all of this is done, you create another group, and it goes on for a while, a long time, years, of these vision partners. So the Norman Public School System, when they develop their next plan, it should be a part of this. It should be married to this. And our next plan after this one will be married to whatever comes out of here. Now, I put SEC in the middle purposely because there were some people that were getting confused. SEC is not the vision. There's a lot of things in there that look like they're the vision, but they're not. They're just a component. If we get the vision right, everything we're doing will work for the SEC. So I think that helps, I think it helps people to better understand kind of who all the players are and where we're focused and how we're trying to bring a comprehensive look at all the stuff we found ourselves engaged in. But we really didn't intend to be at the middle of all this stuff when we got here.
So thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions here. I know I've met with you quite a few times, and you do bring a lot of business to Norman and kind of think outside of the box. So I appreciate that. Do you know anything more? I didn't really hear anything about this in here. And maybe it's dependent on the $20 million. But I know you had mentioned a company that's based out of Noble or head, the owner lives in Noble, but they're in the city. Are they still looking at coming to Norman? Or is that going to be dependent on if we get this?
Well, I did get an email from them yesterday, and they are having second thoughts about, about us, which is unfortunate. They have a business in South Oklahoma City. They didn't go into detail on why that was. I do think some of this, personally, I think some of this is partly in there. There's just a lot of unknowns, and business hates uncertainty.
Okay. And so in regards to the $20 million, you had mentioned that that's dependent on the bond. Can you go into a little bit more detail on that? Because I hadn't heard that. I thought we got the money. I didn't know it was dependent on something. So can you just go into a little bit more detail?
Yeah. So in the application, so it's, it's public record in the ARPA application. You know, I had to sign off on all these things that we would do. So we are going to be tracking every student that goes into that academy. There are like 40 qualified census tracts within Oklahoma City, Norman, seven counties around us that we're actually trying to bring, because ARPA dollars were all about impacting, you know, women and minorities and kids that suffered because of what their families went through. And so we identified all those tracks, and we have to track that. NEDC actually has to track that. That's not a school system requirement. So also in the application, it does say, and I forget the, the paragraph, but it's clearly in there that if the bond does not pass, that the money will be returned. Now, the only wiggle room is if we, if we maybe try the bond again in six months.
What's the bond? That's what I'm, I want to kind of go undercurrent of what that is.
The bond is the Norman Public School System bond, where they had put in, I believe, $32 million for the Oklahoma Academy. That is the match for the $20 million.
Okay. So if the Norman Public School System bond for the $32 million does not pass, then the city will, or the state will not fund their $20 million also.
That's right.
Okay.
Goes back.
Thank you. And then, I'm going to ask, because you mentioned it, what are the three businesses that are leading?
I really can't tell you that, unfortunately. Yeah, I can't. But I can tell you collectively, they represent a billion dollars in sales.
So is this something that's going to be in the report that you write out, or it's just going to be vague as well?
I still won't, I still won't name them. And I hate to do that. But it's, you know, for one of them in particular, you may not, you will not lose operations and sales, but you're going to lose the headquarters. And the headquarters decides. So when they move that headquarters out of Norman, charitable giving from that company is going to drop dramatically, like the John Deere example I gave you.
Is there any way that there could be a private conversation had with our city managers that's so that he could try to salvage some relationships?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Fair. And then, also, thank you for bringing a company that provides good paying jobs or a living wage. I did the math on the side, so it's roughly I did the math on the side, so it's roughly $17.30 an hour at 40 hours a week if they're making $36,000 a year. So thank you for bringing those to our city. And then you're making a comment, and I just want to say this out loud, about math is always bottom line or something along those lines. And I just want to say that I agree. You know, I appreciate development and bringing more money to our city as long as it's the right development and that we don't put profit over people. And that's it.
I think that's great. I'm glad you said that because one of the things I didn't say, I showed you the pink property adjoining the airport. We had an unsolicited offer for $9 million for our property and went through a process and I told them no. I said, tell me who your jobs are, tell me what you're paying, tell me all that stuff. And they wouldn't do it. They gave me some great soundbites of, well, we're working with this group and this group and this group and it's in the aviation. That's all great and fine, but you won't tell me who they are and I'll sign a nondisclosure.
Yeah.
They didn't want to do that. So we're turning down millions of dollars to sell our property because we want to get the right companies here.
Yeah. And I really appreciate that you guys do that and that you take the time to bring good businesses, good quality businesses to us. So thank you.
And Councilmember Studley, on your math, at 17, 17.30, 17.50 an hour, from the State Department of Commerce's perspective, they recognize that being the threshold for what they consider quality jobs. And when there are opportunities from the state to provide incentives, our starting conversation is if you don't qualify for quality jobs, we're not going to talk to you about any incentives. So that's where it stops, right there.
And they did qualify, I believe it was like $11 million they qualified for.
Yeah. I want to echo the thanks for the presentation. I think that it's really important, the work that, you know, NEDC is doing along with the other partners, you know, the Visit Norman, with the Chamber of Commerce and kind of with the city. And I think we've had multiple conversations about like, how does the city, I guess, be a good partner in those larger discussions? And I know that there is, you know, historic, I guess, pains that have been within all of those entities. And I think we are at a pivotal moment in this community as you've laid out in terms of the way that we're doing our comprehensive plans concurrently with a Strong Towns visioning, with your, you know, community visioning. And one of the first things that I told you when you sat down with me when I first got on council and was interviewed was that what is Norman's vision and where are we driving towards? And so like, I would echo that that's something that I said as a community member, as a newly appointed person to council. And so I think that we're finally getting to a point where all of us can put our egos aside, that we can come to the table with whatever bad blood is in the past, like this is for the betterment of our collective community and for the future. And so I just want to make sure that as we continue these conversations, I would say that the city is probably the one that's like left off to the side a lot. And I understand why that has been, but also unless we all decide to collectively come to the table and give each other a chance to move forward, we're never going to be able to shake off that stigma, that, you know, conversation about Norman being difficult or like our relationship that you mentioned with the state and with the county. Like we all have to be bigger people, especially the ones sitting in this room, to understand that there are new players, there are new people. The sins of the past do not have to come into the future, you know, and I won't speak for everybody here on council, but I'll speak for myself that like, this is exactly why I'm here. This is exactly the type of thing that I want to be working on while I'm on council. And so any way that I can assist or be a part of meetings and, you know, whatever, I want to be there. So whoever I need to talk to, to get on the Team Norman things, just like publicly stating what I've said in private for a while. And, you know, I just, I want to, again, double down and kind of thank NEDC for the work and for both of you. I think that you've breathed some life into kind of that sector and what we're trying to do. So I really can't thank both of you enough for like the hard work and the conversations and the bridge building that you've tried to do since you got here a couple of years ago.
Well, thank you so much. And again, you said something I'm glad you said, so Team Norman and being a part of that. So I imagine some people got surveys today. It could have come from any number of people. I will be sending out the survey tomorrow from Team Norman, not from Team Norman, excuse me, NEDC on behalf of Team Norman. But all of us are using our databases to get out this survey. This survey, at the end of the day, it's all about getting data and the backend system will take out duplicate emails and it will take out duplicate names. So you can't game the system, but literally 80,000 to 100,000 emails are going out this week. It's all about data to help decide, is it financially supported to have an entertainment venue district?
Well, thank you for your presentation and everything. It should be a discussion that we have at another meeting about how we want to involve, when we want to do it. A lot of times, these conversations go on during the day. And I know you guys are working and that makes it hard. And so how do we do that? Is there a way to do it in a hybrid way that we can do it?
Well, y'all know Elizabeth and I are 24/7. I mean, someone said today, we can't get one of you without the other. Well, that's kind of how it's been working. But I mean, we work nights. We're great. We're working weekends too. So Saturdays, Sundays and evenings, we will make meetings happen if that fits people's schedule.
We work nights too.
You do, and early mornings too.
Sometimes we're the same.
We've got to work in five minutes. So I'll bring this to the German and thank you very much for doing.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, meeting of December 13th, 2022. Adam Clark, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Studley?
Here.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorella?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Absent.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Heike?
All right. Would you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move into the approval of minutes, approval of City Council Study Session Minutes of September 6, 2022. City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of September 13th, 2022. And the City Council Study Session Minutes of October 18th, 2022. Need a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. And second, the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Minutes were approved unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Awards and presentations. Resolution 22373, awarding the 2022 City of Norman Human Rights Award in conjunction with the Norman Human Rights Commission. To adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. And second, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The resolution was adopted unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to recognize Jackie Farley, Chair of the Norman Human Rights Commission, to read the resolution and introduce Stephen Lett and Russell Rice from Caravans. Do you need this, Jackie?
I have one.
Okay.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to be here for this presentation this evening. My name is Jackie Farley and I'm the Chair of the Human Rights Commission. It's my privilege and honor to present this resolution of the City of Norman, awarding the 2022 Human Rights Award to Norman Caravans on behalf of both the City of Norman and the Human Rights Commission. I'll read the resolution as written. Whereas the City of Norman entrusts the Norman Human Rights Commission with the duties of studying problems of discrimination, advising city council on human rights issues and coordinating citizens' involvement in promotion of human rights. And whereas, the Norman Human Rights Commission seeks to promote and encourage fair treatment and mutual understanding among all citizens to combat all prejudice, bigotry and discrimination that prevent individuals from reaching their full potential as human beings. And whereas, after receiving the nominations from the Norman community, the Norman Human Rights Commission selects an individual or group to receive the Norman Human Rights Award based on exceptional achievement, outstanding effort and/or leadership to promote human rights and equality and to serve as an example to all. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the City of Norman, Oklahoma, in conjunction with the Norman Human Rights Commission, does hereby award the 2022 City of Norman Human Rights Award to Norman Caravans. Here to accept the Human Rights Award on behalf of Norman Caravans is Stephen Lett and Russell Rice.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
And Alan is here too.
Oh, there's a thing.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Okay. So greetings. I'm Stephen Lett, one of the driver dispatchers for Norman Caravans. And I'm here today with me, we have Russell Rice, we have Hannah Smith, and we have Alan Hatcher. And we also have some other community members with us as well, but there's also a bunch that aren't here, so not with us. You know, there's also other volunteers, board members, donors, community members who have supported us during this first year of our operations. It truly takes a community and we're so thankful for all the time, energy and resources that everyone has lent to us. So on behalf of the Norman Caravans team, I thank you for recognizing the work that we are doing, building a community of care with our unhoused friends, and for recognizing that this work is urgent, necessary and incredibly valuable. As Laura, who, like, I have no idea, Laura, thank you for nominating us. So as Laura, the individual who nominated us, wrote in her nomination, it can be found in the staff report if you download that like thousand-page document. So as she noted, like an important aspect of the work we do and that you are commending through giving us this award now is that we loudly advocate for our unhoused friends and speak out about issues affecting them. So we take this award as a recognition of the importance of our sit-in just outside this chamber after you closed the Comanche Shelter. We take this award as a recognition of the importance of our speaking out against the city's support of developments, destruction of our friends' camps out by Crest. And we take this as recognition of the importance of our frequent presence here at City Council pushing you to invest in a community of care. So in order to make our nominator proud, props Laura, here we are once again, and we will not mince our words. Our unhoused friends are dying out there. We see folks slowly dying every day. It's a choice that you are making and it's terrifying knowing that you can change this, but do not. Norman has the resources to support them and you... Norman has the resources to support them, and you are often actively choosing not to do so. By way of accepting this award, we also wish to clarify our understanding of what the resolution you just unanimously passed should mean for your actions on City Council and the directives you give the city staff moving forward. In particular, the resolution, as was just read, states that you believe we at Norman Caravans serve as an example to all in how we go about combating all prejudice, bigotry, and discrimination that prevents individuals from reaching their full potential as human beings. So what is our example? Is to provide every service that you can and to offer every supply you can get your hands on to help out our unhoused community, no strings attached. We do not operate under an austerity mindset. We know that there's an abundance of resources, time, love, and care here in Norman. Our example, then, is to refuse the scarcity mentality, understanding that the issues we are seeking to address emerge precisely out of the notion that our resources are scarce. Following our example, you must stop withholding resources for everyone except property owners, developers, and the police. We learned last month, as we do every month, that there's plenty of cash to go around. Our example is to give that cash to the grassroots institutions that are actually making our community a space of collective nourishment and care. Of course, I'm speaking in general terms for any such organization, but we would be remiss not to take this opportunity to remind you that Norman Caravans has not, to date, received a penny of support from the City of Norman, though we have been promised a reimbursement for the miles our drivers log, and we look forward to that. So while we appreciate this recognition of our work, we have never and will never appear here and simply accept a pat on the back. We will always demand, as we have previously and we do now, that you materially support this work. We are struggling. We're exhausted. We spent this entire year building and operating something you recognize as vital, urgent, necessary, even exemplary, but we cannot sustain what we are doing much longer without funding. This work cannot be volunteer work. We need a massive influx of money so we can actually pay people to do this work. My friend, Allen Hatcher and I, and it's been between the two of us that we've miraculously been able to sustain our work so far, we are reaching our breaking points mentally, physically, and fiscally. And just to be clear to everyone, this award comes with no money. We are, however, of course, going to accept it. We're going to set this award and try to leverage it into cash through grant applications and pushes to raise funds from the community. So to finish up our comments, we would like to inform everyone that we are actively seeking to build our monthly and yearly sustaining donors. We urgently need your assistance so that we can continue to offer this service. This is the work we want to do. We love doing this work, but this is work, and we need to be able to pay folks well to do it. You can find all the ways to donate to us on our link tree, which can be found at http://linktr.ee/nctree. Or you can mail us a check made out to Norman Caravans to PO Box 5269, Norman, Oklahoma, 73070. That, again, was PO Box 5269. We look forward to all the checks. So thank you to everyone who has supported us over this year, and we look forward to many years to come. Take care.
Just a quick note of celebration. Just today, one of our friends got housed.
If you might, I'll give it to Mr. Lett. There you go. Yeah.
Someone needs a camera.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah. All right. Item number three, presentation of a Keep Oklahoma Beautiful Environmental Excellence Award to Ms. Karen Chapman, who has been selected as an affiliate champion for all of her efforts to help our environment in the City of Norman. I need a motion to allow the presentation. I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to allow the presentation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. Gotcha.
The motion was unanimous.
Excellent, thank you. I'd like to recognize Michelle Loudenback, Environmental Study and Sustainability Manager, to make the presentation award to Ms. Chapman.
Thank you. First, I'm going to show this wonderful video that Keep Oklahoma Beautiful created for Karen Chapman. Except we have a problem with sound.
Rice will fix it.
Yes, he will. He's amazing. Well, in the interim. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Keep Oklahoma Beautiful was established in 1965, and it works with municipalities, organizations, and residents to help improve communities through things like litter prevention, beautification, and grants to help do this. They not only provide the resources to make these improvements to our communities, they also recognize the people who work usually behind the scenes so hard to make these improvements come to life. One of these people was recognized on November 18th at the 32nd Annual Environmental Excellence Celebration at the Cowboy Hall of Fame. It's got a different name now, Western Heritage Museum, but that's what I remember it as, Cowboy Hall of Fame. And that person was our very own superstar volunteer, Karen Chapman. Now Karen Chapman, as her friend and my friend and the Conservation Commission's volunteer coordinator says, she's actually a perfect balance of action and words, because she gets out there and she works, and she talks about it too, and tries to encourage others to do the same. She's been a member of Blue Thumb since 2012 and has monitored, picked up litter, and advocated strongly for Bishop Creek, which is one of our urban streams here in Norman. It's very exciting. I cannot express the amount of gratitude that we really all have in this community for her. And before I give her this award, I would like to play this video. Are we ready to go? Maybe? All right.
Let's give her a try and see what we have.
Aw. Well, it worked earlier when we tried to practice. All right. Well, it's a beautiful, beautiful video, and if you have the opportunity, I believe Councilmember Grant actually posted it, the entirety of the video.
Someone muted it.
Oh. Thanks, Ellen!
Sorry.
No, here we go.
Affiliate Champions. Karen Chapman, City of Norman. Karen Chapman is a wonderful advocate for and caretaker of the environment in the City of Norman. She established Friends of Bishop Creek and uses social media to highlight the creek and its condition. She regularly provides litter control in the creek and the surrounding watershed. She also regularly weeds and cares for the pollinator garden located in Eastwood Park. Karen has participated in every area cleanup effort for over five years. Thank you, Karen. You are truly one of Norman's all-stars.
All right.
And with that, I know that Karen has just a couple of words that she'd like to give to everyone, and I'm excited to present her. So please, everyone, welcome with me Karen Chapman.
I never go anywhere without a speech written down. It's just my way.
Is this okay? Okay.
I want to thank the City of Norman for this honor. I've been a Blue Thumb volunteer and creek cleaner since 2012, and since then, I've been fortunate to have the support of stormwater staff, environmental services staff, parks and recreation staff, mayors, and council members. Over the years, I've focused my efforts, for the most part, on the main channel of Bishop Creek, the section of that main channel that flows through Eastwood Park from the footbridge to Boyd Street. In April, I began weighing the trash that I removed. Between April and November of this year, I removed 1,518.82 pounds of trash. This may sound like a success story, but being a hardcore realist, I must emphasize the disheartening fact that I focus on a small section of one creek, the main channel of which is 7.82 miles long in a city with over 300 stream miles. And so we have a problem. Litter is a form of non-point source pollution that needs to be taken seriously. Whether it's on land or in our waterways, litter is a safety hazard not only to humans, but to aquatic and terrestrial wildlife as well. Further, litter is a blight on any community. There is something in human nature that yearns for unspoiled natural spaces that offer us respite, however brief, from our urban existence. These spaces are a balm to our hearts, our spirits, and they're also outdoor classrooms for our children to explore and enjoy. Although a realist, I can still hope. I hope for the placement of conservation easements along all riparian areas. I hope for the creation of protection zones for tributaries of the South Canadian River that, among other things, require a large buffer zone between the outer edge of our riparian area and all development. I hope for the establishment of either a City of Norman Watershed Coalition or a Cleveland County Watershed Coalition. I hope for the creation of a City of Norman Creeks Division. I hope for a stormwater utility. Last but not least, I hope for a creek boom to be placed across Bishop Creek where the concrete channel stops upstream from Eastwood Park. I'm no stormwater engineer, but I believe a boom in this area would prevent a significant amount of litter from flowing into Eastwood Park and on downstream. I can't catch it all, and my 61-year-old back has been, has become quite uncooperative and has started screaming at me using words that aren't at all kind, which is unfortunate because I visited the Eastwood section of Bishop Creek earlier today. Not surprisingly, recent rain events have washed in a lot of trash, and I'm physically incapable of doing anything about it at this point in time, and hopefully that will change. Please remember, our creeks are not mere drainage channels. They possess enormous value, and they need our help and protection. Again, thank you so much for this honor and for your time and attention, and please consider becoming a Blue Thumb volunteer or supporter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Scouts, that's a good example for what happens in life. People keep on learning and people keep on doing things that are just marvelous for the rest of us. It's a great example. Anyway, proclamations. A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of December 2022 is National Impaired Driving Prevention Month in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge or cede to the proclamation. I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge or cede to the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Proclamation was approved unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of December 2022 is National Impaired Driving Prevention Month in the City of Norman, whereas every year, thousands of lives are needlessly lost on our cities and our nation's roadways as a result of alcohol and drug impaired driving. And whereas alcohol, illicit drugs, prescription medicine, and over-the-counter medications can impair a driver's judgment, decrease motor coordination, and slow the reaction time necessary to safely operate a motor vehicle, and whereas the Federal Infrastructure, Investment, and Jobs Act calls for the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration to issue a new standard for the advanced drunk and impaired prevention technology for new vehicles, which would help prevent impaired drivers from taking the wheel. And whereas while technology continues to advance, everyone must take individual responsibility and pledge to never drive while impaired and to deter others from making that fateful decision. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of December 2022 is National Impaired Driving Prevention Month in the City of Norman and urge residents of the City of Norman to make responsible decisions and take appropriate measures to help end impaired driving. Major Barber, would you come forward and take this, please? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I appreciate your time and your recognition of this night. I promise I won't talk for long, despite my reputation. I stand before you on behalf of a family who wasn't able to make it this evening due to a variety of series, so I will ensure that they get this proclamation. It's a family who lost their loved one way too early in a crash in our city in 2012. The reality of driving in our nation is not a good one. We have about 40,000 people that die on the roads every single year. Many of those are needless losses. 29% of them involve alcohol. In Norman, I stand before you tonight in a time where we are embarking on a much, a very grim reality. This year, on a normal year, we average between eight and nine fatalities in our city. The lowest we've had in the last 20 years has been four. It's still way too many, of course. The reality is this year, we've had 26 critical injury collisions. 14 of those have been fatal, resulting in loss of 15 people in our community. This is the highest number of fatal collisions that we've experienced in our community in the last 20 years and in the modern recording of our records. We can fix that in three different ways. The first one is buckle your seatbelts, lock your kids in your car seats. 27% of our fatalities nationwide come from people who are unrestrained. That's your drivers. 43% of people who are passenger cars that are killed in collisions are not buckled in. That includes, of course, small children and other people who should be secured. Distraction is the second area. About 25% of our fatalities in our nation are a result of distraction. That's a very easy thing we can fix. Every one of us is guilty of it, and we have to stop it. And the last one, of course, and the focus tonight is sobriety. So we talked about 29% of our collisions are impairment based of alcohol. That does not include medicine, that doesn't include illicit drugs, doesn't include marijuana, doesn't include any of those other substances that, of course, impact people's ability to safely drive a vehicle. Last year in December, you had before you a gentleman who lost his eight-year-old granddaughter in one of our collisions several years ago. Her name was Cadence Gordon, and her program and her name still lives in everything we do as our agency and all of our efforts every day. It's why we do what we do, so that we don't have to make those notifications, so we don't have to go to those families and tell them that their loved ones aren't coming home, and so that we aren't receiving those phone calls personally as members of the community as well. So I appreciate the time, I appreciate your effort. What I would ask is that we, as a community, come together and that we can choose to do better and to make our community a safer place for everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Council announcements. Councilmember Studley?
So last week, while I was out of town, I learned that a large encampment of unhoused in our city will be forcibly vacated next Monday before Christmas, December 19th, by ODOT and MPD. This time last year, MPD also uprooted many of these same campers from the north side of the encampment area. The reason they are being asked to leave at this time is due to burning fires under the bridge for warmth, which could potentially cause structural issues. The city and ODOT were aware of these same issues from last year. The city is also aware that some of the people who live out there are registered sex offenders who do their legally required regular check-ins, and although we have a warming shelter in place, some of the people at the river are not allowed to go due to being registered sex offenders and/or registered violent offenders. So now, where will they go once they are forced out of the river? Where will they hide in town to stay hidden? How many freed from a school or a park will they be? Does not knowing where registered sex offenders and violent offenders are make us a safer community? The City of Norman continues to support efforts of disbanding camps without answers to these questions and true resolutions in place. This is unacceptable. This is unacceptable. I received an email as a councilperson from our city manager discussing this forcible evacuation, and in it, he listed that the city had been in contact with the COC partners as well as Social Injustice League and Norman Caravans to relocate as many people as possible. This simply is not true. I am the founder of Social Injustice League. I have volunteers that work under me to handle the administrative side of this. I reached out to that admin, to my admin, because I had personally not been contacted as Social Injustice League about this issue, and neither had he. I also reached out to Norman Caravans, and they said the city had also never contacted them, but they had received an email from their COC partner working, letting them know about the upcoming eviction. This email seemed a way for the city to pass the blame after another year went by and not having answers or solutions to these difficult questions that have been asked for several years now. I also find it deeply hypocritical that the city is relying on Norman Caravans to help provide transportation and services to our homeless community, but has yet to help in reimbursement for gas and denied their RFP application without discussion nor negotiation. It would appear that the city has much to learn in ways of transparency, communication, and relationship building. As I mentioned earlier, I was out of town last week, and the first thing I did when I got off the plane last night was went straight to a candlelight vigil for Norman's Cookie Queen, Shannon Hanchett, who was also an advocate for mental health awareness. I was warmed by the love and support this community has shown for her to her family, but I am truly heartbroken to learn her death was due to another failure in our legal system. I obtained a copy of this police report and want to read the first few lines to the public written by arresting Officer Dustin Crawford. It reads as follows. I responded to the above address to contact the defendant at the request of an employee of their store, of the store. Upon arrival, I contacted the defendant who was exhibiting behavior that was consistent with some type of mental health disorder. The rest of the report is irrelevant. It was at that point the officer recognized a mental health issue and should have contacted a professional to evaluate and de-escalate the situation. Instead, she was arrested, taken to jail, and subsequently died 12 days later while in custody at the Cleveland County Detention Center in Norman. She has two sons in our community, ages 10 and 13. In 2020, the council voted for and reallocated $865,000 for a mobile crisis response unit. In 2021, council allocated $500,000 for a mobile crisis response unit. And in 2022, council discussions about it led to the discovery of 988 and discussions of Norman being the first city to implement a mobile crisis response unit in partnerships with COCMH, as discussed in multiple study sessions. Clearly, all of this hasn't been enough, and our system and city policies have once again failed us. At this time, I am requesting at our next council meeting on January 10th, that adding to the agenda so we can vote on the formation and funding of a mobile crisis response unit and have a study session before the meeting discussing everything that this city has learned and talked about in study sessions prior to this, the partnerships that, that we have made with the state regarding 988 and the use of it, the partnerships that we've made with COCMH, how 988 and 911 will work together in our community, that Norman Police Department, what their policy is on mental health calls, as well as what, as what policy changes were made or need to be made to meet the requests of our residents and former and current city council. This allows a month for city staff to research the topic and prepare something to share and discuss with council and the public. Lastly, I just want to say happy holidays to everyone. Please remember to share love, kindness, and joy. Those gifts are free. Thank you.
Councilmember Schuler?
Yes, so first off, I want to address the elephant in the room, which is the cough that I have. I am flu negative, COVID negative, but I had kind of an upper respiratory, so I'm no longer contagious, but I do sound like I'm having some troubles, but I'm okay. Second, I wanted to let Ward Two, this is a continuing conversation about us looking for representatives from the community to serve on two committees that are being formed that will meet over the next two years. One being our comprehensive land use plan and others being a committee to help work with our Strong Towns visioning group. So we are looking for members of the community, and I'm specifically looking for Ward Two residents that would like to serve on either of those ad hoc committees that are being formed. You can go online to the Boards and Commissions page, and there is an online application that can be filled out to let us know that you are interested in serving in that capacity. I believe that the city clerk had told me that there would be a dropdown added for both of those groups, but it doesn't look like that has yet been added. So you can select any of the boards or commissions. Planning Commission is probably the one that I would recommend you selecting, and then make sure whenever you are talking about reasons why you want to serve, that you are indicating which committee you would like to serve on, either the comprehensive land use plan or Strong Towns. So please get those applications in so that we can make recommendations to the mayor to appoint members of the community for those. I also want to let everybody know that typically we have two council meetings each month on the second and fourth Tuesday. This will be our only meeting in December. We have canceled the second, the fourth Tuesday meeting, so we will not meet in these chambers until January 10th. So just kind of giving a forecast to everybody that we will not be here in two weeks. I also want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to both the, the team members from Caravans and also from Karen Chapman for the hard work that they do in our community every day. And I think that, you know, by the words that they were able to share with us shows how deeply they care about the betterment and the future of this community. So I can't say thank you enough to both of them. Lastly, I would like to touch on something that has, I think, deeply affected this community that we learned of late last week and kind of want to echo the words that Councilmember Studley stated. I too was at the candlelight vigil last night just beyond this building over on Main Street on Recess Park adjacent to the Cookie Cottage that Shannon Hanchett had, had as her business as a wonderful part of our downtown and one of a historic place that she revitalized and built into a place where people could come and get cookies, which is such a joy, I think, in most people's lives. I agree that this has been a fundamental breakdown of the policies that we have in place to protect our community members. We need to do a better job of figuring out intervention points along this system that we have put in place. Is it currently serving us the way that it needs to? If everything was in protocol, how do we look at those protocols to make sure that we are saving lives, that we are putting people on a path to healing and not just, you know, incriminating them and placing them in custody when that might not be the best course of action? So I would like to, I guess, lend my support to what Councilmember Studley has asked of us to move forward with creating a mobile crisis response unit and team. It has been clear from this situation that what we believed 988 could do and serve does not go far enough, or we are not using those policies in the way that they have been intended. So I would like to see our community move forward into a positive discussion about how we get something like that jumpstarted. And, you know, on the, on the back of this conversation, I would just like to say that the, all of the stories of love and remembrance that were shared last night, there were tears, there were hugs. I didn't speak last night because I didn't feel like that was my place, because I knew that I had this opportunity tonight to speak to everybody in kind of an official capacity. So I will share how I met Shannon, which was volunteering earlier this year at Norman Music Fest. There was a call put out on, on social media by some of the coordinators and said, hey, we really need a couple of people to, to stop down and help, you know, run food or, you know, move things around the crowd or, you know, help support the acts or the other volunteers that have been given countless hours to that amazing festival that we hold here every year. So I think Shannon and I showed up and said, yes, like, we'll help. We've never done this before. We're happy to be here. And that was the first time that I met her face to face. And it was like she was a friend already. And that is something that I think everybody shared last night. I don't think that Shannon knew a stranger. So we, we talked a little bit about, you know, her and this community and that I served in this capacity on city council and came to find out that she was a constituent of mine. At the time, she was living in Ward Two. And so that was something that was, you know, deeply exciting to me. I was like, oh, look, here we go. I'm gonna, you know, have this face-to-face relationship with a constituent. We made friends on Facebook, and we continued to kind of message back and forth. So it was very heartbreaking to hear of her passing last week. So tonight, I am wearing, it's hard to see, but this, these are little cats, so it's Cat's Tooth in honor of her. I'm wearing my brightest lipstick. I do not have bright red lipstick. It just doesn't look good on me as it did on her, and I drank my Dr. Pepper tonight in honor of her. So I would like to see us, you know, think about what is the outcome of this tragedy. And lastly, I would also like to close with happy holidays to whatever holiday that you celebrate during this time and to hug your family, hug your friends, and say I love you. Thank you.
Councilmember Lynn?
Well, I'll tell you, I find it quite repulsive to bring in TV cameras here and use this terrible tragedy as a political moment and try to lay this at the feet of our, our policemen. Just know that our policemen are men and women in blue here in the city. You have the support overwhelmingly of the city and overwhelmingly of the, the majority of the elected people up here. Other than that, Merry Christmas, everybody. See you next year after this meeting.
Councilmember Gray?
Yeah, I would like to highlight a few of the following items. Norman residents have till December 16th, this Friday, to register to vote in the OG&E franchise agreement election, which will be held on January 10th, 2023. I encourage everyone to read up on the ballot language and the history of how we got here. Talk to your Norman community about it. It's the only item on the ballot. Environmental design criteria updates need your feedback, Norman. The design, I'm sorry, the deadline to submit EDC comments, concerns, suggestions is by 5:00 PM on December 30th. I learned in our November 29th study session that feedback from communities like the ADA community had been underrepresented. The city council is tentatively scheduled to adopt the new EDC and construction drawing specifications in February of 2023, so we need to hear from you well before then. Speaking of the future, I am looking for Ward Four residents to talk about their interest in serving on either the comprehensive plan or the Strong Town Committees. We have till January to finalize our list of nominees from within our wards. These will be two-year mayoral appointments as approved by a vote of city council. The goal is to bring forward a diverse pool of nominees, so I want to connect with Ward Four residents from all backgrounds. You can reach me at wardfour@normanok.gov or 405-876-9237. Whilst, I would like to end my council announcements by acknowledging the tragic passing of Ward Four resident and small business owner Shannon Hanchett. She was laid to rest earlier today. I heard last night during her vigil how much she loved her Norman community, and it was reflected in who showed up to honor her life. I'm sorry as a city that we failed to bring forth the necessary policy changes we know we need to address in mental health. I want to highlight that I helped with the People's Budget Coalition to see the creation of Norman Crew before I ran for office. I know what the vision is and what it, it is not what Shannon Hanchett experienced. We don't need to see anyone else suffer for lack of a Norman-based mental health crisis response, which is for compassionate response, emergency workers. If we want to talk about what creates public safety, isn't it strange that we rushed into funding a Bearcat without any of the details fully fleshed out and before the city of Norman had even sent out an RFP to start the public safety study? Yet, we've stalled on funding elsewhere, even when we have it set aside, because money was allocated to start a service like Norman Crew. So I too want to see a study session reviewing how we use 988, examine our current policing and dispatching policies for mental health incidents, and dig into our contracts with the Cleveland County Detention Center. Since the county uses Turnkey Health, a corporation that is tailored to the needs of your county, I'm curious to know how much Norman taxpayer money pays for that service, since it didn't seem to help Shannon. Taxes and death are inescapable, as they say. So I find it ironic that Shannon Hanchett, a former mental health care worker and advocate, roughly a week before her health crisis, was sitting through a monthly infusion to treat her autoimmune disorder. It took three and a half hours to receive treatment, during which she was using her time to pay her small business's monthly sales taxes and annual health department permit. I would like to pause for 12 seconds of silence, one for each second, or one second for each day Shannon Hanchett was incarcerated and not given adequate care.
Councilmember Tortorella. Were you finished? Okay, Councilmember Tortorella.
Thank you. Hey, I'd like to remind everyone that there's still an ongoing investigation into her death. So before making judgments in public about our police officers, whom we all support, the majority of the council members up here, we don't know exactly what happened to her yet, and we shouldn't rush to judgments. I think using her death for political purposes is not the best thing for our community. I say let's tone down the rhetoric, wait for the report to come out, and see what actually happened to her. And I also want to ask city manager about the funds that were set aside for the crisis mobile unit. Did we use that for a different project voted on by council?
Council's used some of those dollars. There's still a substantial balance in that account.
Okay, but they were earmarked for the mobile crisis unit, but we used them for...
Neighborhood Alliance and a couple of other smaller acquisitions.
Okay, all right. Well, I'd like to, like I said, we shouldn't rush a judgment here, and our Norman police officers, EMS and firemen, they rush into the danger, and they do the jobs that we just, we paid them for. And I don't think we should use the Council dais to attack them on something we don't know and have all the facts yet. And so let's preserve those facts and judgment until the report comes out, and then we can go from there. Ward Five, I have a mini-town hall on Thursday at Pleasant Hill Freeway Baptist Church. We're going to discuss the Open Meeting Act lawsuits against OTA and what it means for Ward Five. Other than that, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next year. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. First, I want to give my personal thanks to Karen Chapman for all your work in Norman, specifically for helping to take care of the section of Bishop Creek that's in Ward Seven. So we've also been out at Reeves Park collecting trash before, and you're, it's just an invaluable volunteer service that you provide to our community and truly an example for everybody out there. If you're thinking about how you can help your community, how you can volunteer, some of the things that Karen's doing, like helping keep our stormwater channels clean, is a vital, vital service here in Norman. So I appreciate you so much. Also, I want to thank the scout troop, 219, for asking me to come speak to their group last week. I think we had a pretty good discussion, about an hour long, some really great questions, and my answers can go on pretty long sometimes, I know. and my answers can go on pretty long sometimes, I know, but they're just so detailed. Um, so I really appreciate you inviting me to come out and talk, and I appreciate you coming out to the council meeting this evening and being able to see this, uh, whole thing in action. I hope you walk away learning something about it that you didn't know before, and I would absolutely encourage you all to please feel free to reach out to any of us. One, find out which one of us is your council member, and then feel free to reach out to us anytime if you have any questions, if you have any comments that you'd like to make, um, uh, anything that you might be interested in when it comes to what we do up here. I think any of us would be more than happy, uh, to discuss further, um, what we do and how we could get you more involved in, in, uh, helping us out up here. So thank you again so much, uh, for allowing me to speak to you and for being here tonight. Um, I also want to, uh, extend a thank you to the residents of Ward Seven. Uh, surprisingly to me, nobody filed to run against me last week, um, so I get re-elected automatically, I guess, so, uh, not the ideal way. Um, I always like to think there's somebody out there that wants to present a challenge and, and bring up questions and, and concerns that may not being, may not be being addressed, um, but I will take it where I can get it, and I look forward to two more years of serving you and, um, these issues that we, these very large issues and complicated ones that we have to address in this community, um, I'm really looking forward to continuing to be a primary, uh, part of that discussion. So, um, I will be participating in any candidate forums, uh, that, that happen. Um, I did that the last time I ran in the post, and I felt it was a good opportunity to, uh, provide my perspective and answer the questions, uh, the community had, even if I didn't have an opponent. So I will be participating in those, uh, when we know when they're happening, and I look forward to that. Um, I also, uh, will be available to discuss the franchise, uh, agreement election with OG&E, the school board, uh, school bond election that'll be coming up on, uh, February 14th. Um, any of those issues, if you, uh, would like to discuss those with me, if you have any questions, please feel free, uh, to reach out anytime. I'm more than happy to discuss. Uh, also, I'm looking for Ward Seven residents that are interested in serving on the comp plan and the Strong Towns Committees. Uh, these are long-range planning, uh, documents and actions that we will be taking that will really impact Norman for the next 50 years, uh, potentially, and we need as many voices and opinions and perspectives as possible so we can make sure, um, that we're doing the right thing. So if you live in Ward Seven and you're interested in serving on any of those, please feel free to reach out to me, um, and I'll get you in touch with Mayor Heikla and city staff, and we'll go from there. Um, also, uh, want to mention that, uh, also mention supporting Caravans. Um, definitely encourage everybody to check them out and offer your support if you can. Uh, they do provide an essential and, uh, service that is not duplicated currently in Norman by providing transportation to individuals that need it. Um, I've used them in my business before to help someone who just needed a ride somewhere, you know? Um, instead, some folks might have called the police in some situations, but there's a lot of times where the police are not necessary or needed in a situation, and maybe somebody just needs a ride somewhere to the food and shelter. And so being able to call an organization like Caravans, and they're able to come deal with it so that the police department does not have to deal with it, uh, I think that's an invaluable service, and we really do have to look at how the city of Norman can help support them further. Um, and, you know, um, I just went on a few days' trip to Los Angeles. I do it usually once a year, and I always drive. Um, it's just something I really look forward to and I like doing. Uh, driving through the desert, kind of by yourself on the highway, is a great opportunity to reflect and think about things that are going on. Um, I was fortunate, this trip, just out of happenstance, I happened to be going to the Rams game on Thursday night, and so I got to see Baker Mayfield play and, and lead them back to a game-winning touchdown, which was amazing. Um, Friday night I got to go to the Whiskey A Go Go, uh, a venue, historic venue in LA that I've always wanted to go to. And then Saturday night I got to go to a concert at the LA Coliseum. Um, it was pretty amazing. So, uh, great trip, got to see some really good friends and hang out with them, and then I was able to get back last night, really with enough time to take a shower and head over to the vigil. That was really the only thing that kind of, it didn't ruin my vacation, but it, you know, put a damper on it for sure, learning the news of that on Thursday, uh, Shannon's passing. I just really appreciate everything that she did for our community, uh, bringing her business to Main Street, uh, reusing an old historic building that all, for years and years, people would always ask, what about that little cottage on Main Street? What, when's somebody gonna fix that up or do something with it? Or, I hope that doesn't get torn down, or... And, uh, thanks to local, local developer, um, investing in that property, and then her, uh, willingness to bring her business and put it in there. It was just perfect, the Cookie Cottage. I mean, couldn't ask for anything, uh, better than that. So I just appreciate everything that she did for us as community and can assure that we will do everything we can, uh, to make sure that that type of thing doesn't happen again. And I don't want to go around blaming people and everything. We don't need to do that. We need to figure out what we're gonna do better going forward, and I think that's what she would want us to do. And I do think that in a city our size, having some kind of, uh, mental health mobile response unit that can, uh, respond to issues and hopefully diffuse them that could, and hopefully lead to a different outcome. There are issues that we need the police to do, uh, to respond to, and that that's what they're trained to do, but there's a lot of issues that they may not be the best trained to do. And I do think in a city, again, in our city of our size, having a dedicated mental health crisis response team is something we really should be focusing on, uh, going forward. So that's all I have for, for now. Thank you all very much.
Councilmember Peacock?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, so Shannon Hanchett was a friend of mine as well. What happened to her is absolutely heartbreaking, senseless, and the scary part is it could happen to any of us. She deserved better, so much better, and I think for us to truly honor her legacy, then we all have to do better. It's that spirit that I'm gonna join the calls for a full review of current procedures involving mental health calls and for a full implementation of the mobile crisis response team that was appropriated in 2020. As was just said, we can't ever let this happen in our community again, and to ensure that it doesn't, we have to challenge the status quo and come up with a new approach that doesn't endanger people when they are in crisis and calling for help. I seriously hope that this request is met by both law enforcement and the community with a willingness to fix what is not working. We are better and we are working together, and this is a problem that is going to take a great amount of community collaboration to solve. Shannon Hanchett was an incredible person, and I, I don't want anybody to lose sight of that.
Mayor has nothing. Uh, consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council by unanimous, uh, consent can designate these routine agenda items, that they be, uh, approved or acknowledged by one motion. Staff recommends that Items 5 through Item 29, excluding Item 24, which has been withdrawn, be placed on the consent docket. Need a motion to place Items 5 through 29 excluding Item 24. I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to place Items 5 through 29 excluding Item 24, which has been withdrawn, on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
She said her vote.
Oh, there are only seven?
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay. Let's do it again.
Oh.
Ready?
Okay. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
It really is unanimous now.
We're sure.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, yes, sir. Please do.
Remove 24. Uh, is there maybe any comment about why or what, what's up with that?
Um, the item...
I like that project, so...
Yeah, it was a grant application, if I'm not mistaken. Originally, it was pulled from the consent calendar for discussion. When the minutes were being prepared, we recognized it was not voted on and approved during that meeting. So... And then as we're doing the minutes for the meeting, we recognized, we re-agendized at the following meeting, so it's already been approved. So no need to take action twice.
Okay, good. A double vote doesn't give you double money.
Well, I was hoping we didn't lose it.
Yeah, nope, correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyway, uh, I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Voted to approve.
Okay. Second. Uh, are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. Thank you, ma'am. Non-consent items, this is Item 30. Uh, consideration of adoption of ordinance 0222319 upon second... ...to Chapter 2 of the City Code empowering the city manager or his designee to set the price for use of the city-owned charging stations by other government, governmental entities and the general public, setting forth a signage requirement for parking spaces reserved for charging stations and related definitions. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, uh, section by section. I have a motion and second. Ms. Heather Poole is with us, Assistant City Attorney. Would you give us a presentation, please?
I will, thank you. Um, I'm afraid I'm not gonna be able to channel the enthusiasm that, uh, the staff who previously presented this at the, uh, November 17th Council, uh, Finance Committee meeting, Michelle Laudenbach had, but all of staff is supportive. We're just not all as capable of expressing it as well as she does. Um, go ahead. Uh, again, the reason that we are implementing this ordinance is in order to allow pricing, um, for access by the public and other government entities. The reason that we have the EV stations is the, um, history with the city of Norman is that in 1995, we joined the ACOG Clean Cities Coalition. Uh, in 2005, we passed a resolution supporting the mayor's climate protection agreement. We also implemented an internal fuel conservation policy in 2008, and in 2009, we had an alternative fuel program within the city. We have based the EV pricing ordinance off of the C and G pricing ordinance that we implemented in 2011 in order to allow pricing for the C and G public fueling station that we put in place in 2011, in 2012. We, again, in 2018, uh, rejoined and, uh, re, um, committed to the mayor's climate protection agreement and had an update on the recommendations for that. 2018, we also, um, supported, uh, passed a resolution supporting, uh, the Sierra Clubs Ready for 100. 2019, um, we implemented the EV charging station at North Base for internal city vehicles, and in 2022, we also had one implemented for our bus and other, um, city vehicles at the transit facility. We have supported that through grants. So DEQ grant, um, paid for the, uh, solar charging stations that have been implemented and for an electric bus purchase, which, uh, we expect, it keeps getting pushed back like a lot of other, um, uh, items, manufacturing items, but, uh, we do expect either delivery at the end of this month or early January. We also received an FTA grant for electric bus and charging stations and an ACOG EV charging stations grant that allowed for the, um, uh, stations at the North Base and the Transit Center. The implementation for the stations that will be accessible to the public and other, uh, public entities is, again, another ACOG grant, and that will be paying for, uh, for future, um, stations being installed. In order to address the pricing, this ordinance has added two additional sections to Chapter 2, an additional Article 7, that addresses designating reserve parking spaces for the EV chargers, explains what kind of activities can be allowed in those spaces, and defines terms such as charging station, electric vehicles, non-electric, and hybrid vehicles. The most important part that was adopted from the C and G ordinance is that it allows the city manager or his designee to implement pricing based on different market factors and conditions, and allows daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, um, types of pricing to address for any volatility that may arise there. There is no violations or penalties set out in Chapter 2 because, since it's a parking, um, issue, those come up in Chapter 20 and Chapter 14. These stations will be located at Robinson Crossing, at the Norman Municipal Parking Lot, at Rudy's Barbecue, and again, we already have one on the North Base, and, um, the, um, hope is that we will have another one, uh, near the, um, municipal complex located at these buildings. Not sure, that doesn't really show it very well, but there is a map that reflects where those locations are based, um, within Norman. And there are the four, including North Station. Um, again, the C and G and the transit facility, uh, EV charging stations are, um, already up and going, and we're expecting those electric buses that will be using them very soon. The EV charging station, we have already received, uh, we're in the design and the bid phase to begin the installation for those, which will begin shortly, and hopefully we will see that installed in spring or summer of, uh, next year. Again, um, I'm channeling my best, Michelle Laudenbach, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain those.
Any questions or comments from council? It's not going through. Councilmember Holman?
Sue, how does the city manager set the price of the EV charge compared to like gasoline or... C and G, we know what the price per gallon costs us. How does that work with these?
Um, the goal in this particular instance is just to break even, cover the cost of the electricity provided, and we have all recognized some rate increases recently through the Corporation Commission, and this process will just allow us to stay current as our bill changes. We'd be able to change it at the charging station directly.
And what is it, like a, what is the unit of measurement?
Um, it's, it's per kilowatt hour, and actually, uh, folks who are EV owners often wind up, uh, with an app, and it could be a, like a key fob kind of a thing. It could be, uh, just directly from your phone, that when you plug in, you're able to tap your phone app or a key fob to the charging station, and that connects us to your account, so we know who to bill. Uh, and most of it happens in a completely automated fashion. So our goal is just to make sure people who don't own electric vehicles aren't subsidizing, uh, people who do own electric vehicles. We just want to cover the cost and, and break even, make the service as readily available as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Hearing no more. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there any speakers for this?
No, none, no speakers.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Poole. Uh, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The ordinance is adopted on second reading unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Voted to adopt.
I have a motion to adopt, and second, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Ordinance is adopted on final reading unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Do we have any sign up?
Yeah. Marguerite Larson?
Marguerite Larson, Ward 6. And I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Studley said, Councilmember Shula said, Councilmember Grant said, Councilmember Holman said, and Councilmember Peacock said. We, as a city, have neglected, continuously neglected, to fund mental health. And we have an example, several examples of people that have had issues, that has been responded by Norman Police, who have escalated, not de-escalated, the situation and has continuously said that they are not capable, they're not trained to do this. I don't understand why NPD is constantly being called in on this when we have funding available, which has never been funded. It is time for the city of Norman to do something right, to take care of the mental health, to have issues addressed, and to have people who are trained to come in and assist our citizens, because that's what we should be doing, is taking care of our citizens. So I'm hoping that when this comes to council in January, that this is a good discussion and it is progressive. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. Three things tonight. First of all, is a shout-out to Karen Chapman. She's a neighbor and a hero to me. I wish she would have hung around for two more minutes. I'll see her in the neighborhood. Two, it's really time for Norman to revisit our public safety issues, the Bearcat in particular. In the Shannon Hanchett case, we need to fast-forward past the "did one officer violate any rules" stuff that we know is coming, that we actually heard some tonight, and recognize that what we know now is enough to make an important change. The rules themselves are deficient if people are arrested and die in custody, like Shannon did. That's the fact we need to know. We judge our public safety system with a wildly inappropriate criteria, criteria that are far too permissive with respect to the systemic damage that happens to people who are lesser advantaged in particular. We need to rethink the whole thing, and we'll never do that as long as we let the police basically run themselves. Six years ago, to the night, the then-council member from Ward 2 got roundly abused on the dais for daring to suggest that the city council should have some say over police policy issues. I hope we've grown up from that. We see that we need to be. Third thing, Norman Caravans won an award tonight for being both compassionate and proactive in its service to the unhoused. Unfortunately, the city of Norman is really being neither. It's been pressuring private businesses to trespass our unhoused friends. Within the week, as Councilmember Studley noted, Norman Police will be helping evict a large number of people from ODOT land, a group that literally has no other place to go. The shelter is pretty full up already, and I just learned tonight that there are some folks down there who can't legally stay in town. We don't want them to be staying in town. I'm on the board of Norman Caravans, and I can assure you that we're gonna be there to help those people shield themselves from this blow from the city of Norman. We're gonna be there to advocate for them and, you know, look for my white minivan. We'll be down there, and we'll be trying to do our best for them. I wish Norman, as a city, would reconsider how it handles these sorts of situations because chasing unhoused people around town is not helping them and it's not helping us. We need to have much more permanent solutions, so it's time we really think about that. So hopefully, we'll get a chance to see some of that affordable housing stuff that people have been talking about. Can't wait for January. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
A couple of things tonight. Again, Rob Norman, Ward 3. A couple of things tonight having to do with the reason why I'm here are, one, a well-deserved award given to Norman Caravans. And, two, a matter that went through consent, wasn't announced, and that is basically the transfer of youth baseball, kind of actually, if you've been around a long time, back to the Norman Optimists Club, where it was once housed a long time ago. What I would say is, is thank you for both of those things, for that award and for realizing that that was a good thing to do off the consent docket tonight. A couple of unifying things about that, this. More needs to be done for the city to assist Norman Caravans. Norman Caravans, the city reached out to Norman Caravans and, for various reasons, did not cement a deal with them. It's time to revisit that. They have met some of the criteria that the city was concerned with before, and some of that money needs to be allocated. If the city is going to rely on Norman Caravans to provide services, the city needs to help fund Norman Caravans. It's time to get there. And as far as the Norman Optimists Club goes, there's gonna be a very, very difficult thing going on in January that's not on everyone's radar screen right now, something the city has never done before. And that is figuring out how the Santa Fe Life Center is, not the Santa Fe Life Center, but the YFAC, is going to be operated by the Santa Fe Life Center, the Norman Optimists Club, and the Sooner Swim Club in a way that will serve all the kids in Norman. So be ready for that. You're gonna be hearing from us. You're gonna be hearing more about that. And keep in mind that that is a very important thing for all the kids in Norman. So Caravans, Norman Optimists Club, and let's keep those things in mind and get solutions.
Thank you, sir.
John, hi.
Can you hear me?
Is that on?
Is it on?
Is that on?
Testing. Hello? Did you switch on it? Okay. No.
You gotta turn it on your side.
The wireless, gotcha.
Got it?
Got it.
There you go. Now y'all can hear me. You know, on the way over here, I was almost hit by two cars that doesn't know what a crosswalk means. One was over on Main Street where it turns left and it says yield. It even has a sign that says... You know, our people really do need to either write tickets on these people before some other people get hit. I was talking to the officer before I went into the meeting over there, and he was saying how they really need to spice down on some, writing some tickets on it. Well, why don't they start? Why don't they do a, as in newspaper, saying, "Hey, guys, we are hitting people out here." It's really sad. But the other thing I want to point out is that we need to have more time. You want to hear from your residents, you don't leave them saying, "You only have three minutes." You should be giving as much time as a resident wants to talk to you. You say you want to hear, you want to be transparent, well, give the time. Give enough time. I'm upset, you know what I'm saying? When I sit there and I read the instructions, I was told they go by a list. My name was the first one on that list back there. I was the last one called.
Oh, you weren't.
I was the first one on the list.
That list? Already had a list?
Yeah, well, I know that the other ones were not called from the, what you say, by the internet. So I know my name was the first one there. I was there at 5:30, and there was no one else on the list before me. And you say you call it in roll, but you don't. So I'm not gonna argue that point with it, but we do need to look into that, that you are not going by what you say you're going by, by rules, saying, "We're gonna go by the list from start to finish on that list." And it was not done today. I know for a fact. Okay? But we really do need to wa, if you really want to hear from your people, you need to open up the mic and give them as much time as they want to sit up here for an hour talking to you. Let them talk to you. Let them tell you what's going on in their heads. Am I done?
You got 55 seconds.
Okay. But, you know, let them talk to y'all. Do you want to hear your people or not? "Oh, you only have three minutes."
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. I, I need to say how shocked I was a couple days ago whenever I read a story about Shannon. And I didn't know her, but she was a Norman resident. She was a part of this larger family. And I know that the officers probably feel terrible. The people who worked at the jail probably feel terrible. How are we gonna do better? What is it that we can all do so that these types of events don't occur? Because the social cost, her kids are gonna grow up without a mom, and who knows what challenges they're gonna face? Who knows what bad decisions they might make? Or who knows what advice she would have given them that would have guided them in a better I also want to talk about our sensibilities and how, when I look out at a business and I see a well-manicured yard or a well-manicured easement, I don't think, and I know that the international students don't see that as being beauty that they want to replicate. I've talked to them. They're too polite. They're not gonna make waves. They say, "That's waste. Look at these wasteful Americans." They just splash oil on grass when it has productive potential that we are not utilizing. Look at all the grass around us. I know people garden. Gardeners are just too timid. I think to say that, "Yes, I garden." Why do I garden? Because it grows food closer to me. It cuts the supply chains. It sequesters carbon. It creates habitat for pollinators. Karen Chapman is a revolutionary. We should be paying people to do what she does. But we aren't. But we could. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
There are no more speakers? Any more from council?
No.
We are adjourned. I'll be back.
Okay.